All right. Hello. Good evening, everyone. I think we have some sound this evening, so we're going to try. We have a temporary resolution here of our AV equipment, so hopefully it lasts through this very short agenda. So tonight, as the board members are getting seated here to prepare for business, quickly to get through this agenda here, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home on television, tonight is a workshop session of the board, and they have two items on the agenda. First, to include a presentation of an update on Commonwealth legislation pertaining to shopping malls and other municipal affairs, that by State Representative Justin Fleming. He will be joining us. And then next, the board will take action to rescind the appointment of Laura Kurtz to the Board of Supervisors. After that, the board will take announcements, make a motion to adjourn, and then we're off to our homes. With all that said, members of the board are seated and prepared to conduct business. Thank you very much.
Okay, I call to order March 11th, 2025, the Board of Supervisors for the Lower Paxton Township. If everyone would please stand for Supervisor McCormick for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Okay. Thank you. We do have a very short meeting this evening, so we're going to move on to public comment. Public comment is the time for people from the public to come up and please offer any comments that they have. Please give us your name, and we will be sticking to the five-minute rule. Also, public comment is for any item that is not on the agenda. Does anybody have public comment? Go ahead, sir.
William Miller, 4311 Crestview. I've spoken, you gentlemen, ladies, about PennDOT once before. I tracked, I called, I called PennDOT about some branches and things overhanging the roads. It's a state road. It's not their deal. I was informed they're only responsible for the white line on the road, the edge of the berm. But they pave the berm, they excavate the embankments, and so on and so forth. It's where people walk. It's the only walkway on Colonial Road. I wrote down the parcel numbers. I can supply those. But Colonial, near the restaurant there, from Sheets up to Crestview Road, there's branches that are hanging over, they're hanging on the Verizon lines. They're heavy. They're going to snap. They could fly out into the road. They need removed. There used to be an ongoing maintenance by Verizon to trim those out. I called Verizon. They said, "We don't do that." They told me that you need to call the homeowner. Well, I can't call the homeowner. Perhaps the township, but you would think there's a right-of-way there. There's a right-of-way, they have a right-of-way below the edge of Colonial Road, right across from Goose Valley. I took photos. It's overtwined. In one of these days, it's going to, you know, those lines can take a lot of weight, but they're not going to take all that weight. Also, there's also enough trash down there to probably fill 30 trash bags, and I've been trying to get down in there. And we have a right-of-way, the township, for the sewer, and I was hoping that someone was going to show that to me. It just never happened. But I can get most of it out of there. I'm just tired of looking at it. It's pretty nasty. The other area over or off of, I called about Lock Willow. When you go Lock Willow over to Old 22, it's like riding a roller coaster. Those of you that know, you take your truck. You have a trail of your car. The road's subsiding. They just put down a blacktop, and it's failed. It's been like four or five years. He said, "We're going to get to that. I want to replace all that the whole way out the road." Well, right now, this has been like that, and if you drive over, you'll see what I mean. Rutherford Road, called PennDOT about the sidewalk they own. I have the parcel number. They said, "We only own to the curb." All those young people that walk over to CDE East Middle and the high school, that's, PennDOT's responsibility to repair that, maintain it per township ordinance. There's no ADA curb cuts anymore at Garden. The sidewalks heaved. The material in a talus formation is covered in the sidewalk, so it impedes the process. And if it's not planned again now, it won't happen for the winter. And so then you won't be able to plow it again. Well, it's uneven. We can't plow it. The other area was, oh, on Colonial Club, as you come off of Lock Willow, up to where they're doing the sewer. Branches overhanging again, spring-loaded. It's a multi-truck job. It's not for the faint of heart, and they need to be removed. I thought, "Well, I'll see who owns it." PennDOT again owns that land. And they're just not, and again, there used to be ongoing maintenance, but Verizon just told me again, "They don't do it." And then lastly, with PennDOT, there was a dead deer on Colonial Road, near Avon. I called. People ride the bikes down. They'll be going down to 3B. There's no sidewalks, but it's wide enough. But spring-loaded branches on one side, dead deer on the other. PennDOT told me, "Well, we're not going to pick that deer up because it's diseased." I mean, I'm accentuating it, but they're making light of it. I said, "Why can't you pick it up?" "Well, it's diseased." I didn't know we were a CWD area here now, chronic wasting disease. "Well, why don't you just pick it up and then take it to the game commission because they have to pick it up?" "Well, we don't do that." And so then I said, "Well, can you give me the number for PennDOT?" I was pulled over. I was down there. "Can you give me the number?" "No." "Can you take my information and give it to PennDOT?"[429.66][429.66]"No." I called the game commission. She was the nicest, friendliest person. They want the deer, apparently, and I don't know what the township's doing. They want the deer to do a necropsy and see, you need, like rabies, you want to track, you know, you want to track the disease pattern and see where these animals are. I just have never been so stymied by PennDOT. Right near Goose Valley and Colonial, there's been a tree laying there for two years. It's laying on the edge of the road. Someone finally got it pushed back when a plow hit it. And, you know, that's where people walk and run again. I don't feel it's up to those homeowners to clear away all that stuff, which is the edge or the berm of PennDOT. So, and I will say lastly, I went to the Shuntwoodoff and Board meeting for their grounds to talk about that sidewalk over there by CDE East. And one lady said, "What can we do to help you?" And I said, "You need to reach out to people you know, who have some influence, who know someone, who can speak to someone." Because I feel like I'm beating a dead horse, but I'm not one to give up. So hopefully, we can get that done. But on Colonial Road, again, they wouldn't pick up the tree. That tree's been there for two years. And I feel it's their responsible and their culpable one, especially if one of those things breaks off now that they're spring-loaded. That's terrible.
Sure. Thank you. We, you know, so who would be, do we share responsibility for any of that stuff, the trees, any of those things, the dead deer?
No, I mean, it's always certainly a balancing act or a difficult dance we do. Of course, you know, balancing public safety. So, I mean, if there's an immediate public safety risk or concern, you know, it's certainly something that our Public Works Department will take a look at and just take care of. But of course, we don't, you know, we don't have any standing, necessarily standing formal agreements with PennDOT to have as a standard practice that sort of a, of an arrangement. Although, you know, PennDOT has been, you know, exploring more and pushing more for local cooperation and through their agility programs. Representative Fleming just walked in the room, so might be timely comments, sir. But, you know, I think it's something that the township will take a look at and have a conversation with PennDOT to see what sort of additional cooperation we may be able to have with them. And, you know, again, especially through that agility program they have to kind of share services and bounce some things back and forth. So we'll take a look at all those things.
Yeah, the tree thing is, the limb thing is a real issue.
That's a real issue right now.
When the wind blows, they fall. I mean, you know, and I'm always nervous that they're going to fall in somebody's car. I mean, that's a real issue. It always has been.
It's a maintenance thing along that road, and you'll see they haven't clear-cut down through that one area by 3B in a long time. And it used to be a common occurrence. So I'll have some, Colonial Road, I'm going to take some other pictures. There's a lot of damage to that road. Yes, sir.
Make notes, and, sorry, if you would please make notes and then get them over, that would be helpful, I think.
I'll send you the pics. I mean,
Sounds good.
You won't believe what I've found.
Okay.
Mr. Miller, could you give us the name of your contact, the person that you spoke with at PennDOT?
I don't want to beat them up a whole lot. I don't want to really, I'm mad at me. I called about Route 39 and
So you don't want to give us the name?
Well, I was going to call the one lady back. Don't ever call me again. But they're still mowing the catch basins at 39 and 22 for the last two years. So that was a win.
Okay, so you're satisfied not to give the name because perhaps we could take something, write something?
I would think it'd be best to just, hey, look, this came up. Can you fix it?
Yeah.
And then give them a chance to, you know,
I'm sure we have contacts at PennDOT.
Yeah, move up to chain. I don't want to throw anybody under the bus. But, you know, I wasn't, I'm not happy the fact they don't take care of it.
We can, I'm sure Representative Fleming, he's got us. All right. He's got us. All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on. Any other, any other comments from the public? Any public comments? Go ahead, sir. Just your name and address, please.
GATA, 3215 Vanessa Drive. GATA, G-A-E-T-A. So we were told last week, apparently, our household was the last one to be notified. One of the officers from Lower Paxton came and let us know, in the cul-de-sac we live in, that they would be putting signs up saying that there would be no more parking allowed in the cul-de-sac. This is up in Blue Ridge Village, the new development up there. And the first thing was, none of us were informed that it would be a no-parking. And apparently, I was told by the officer that Triple Crown was aware of this, and that, I don't know how true it is, they talked to the board, and they fought for the right to put the signs up themselves, and never did. And that's why the township now is finally stepping in and putting the signs up. But before we get to putting those signs up, I went around to the neighborhood, and I was able to get quite a few signatures, over 20 signatures of the cul-de-sac in specific and the line of homes going down that because they'll be affected as well. But I'll just simply read the petition of what we wrote, just talking, talking. It said, "We, the undersigned residents of Blue Ridge Village, specific to Benjamin Court and Vanessa Drive, respectfully submit this petition requesting a modification of the parking restrictions, currently scheduled for signage, installation, and enforcement in our cul-de-sacs. The existing no-parking regulations will present an already ongoing challenge for residents and visitors, and we believe an adjusted policy would better balance public safety, accessibility, and community needs. Currently, the no-parking rule in the cul-de-sac will restrict residents and their guests from utilizing street parking at all times. While we recognize the need to maintain emergency access and allow for essential services, a complete prohibition is unnecessarily restrictive. Instead, we propose modifying the restriction to no-parking on trash days," which I understand, because I've seen it quite a few times out there, since they don't get out of the vehicle anymore, and they use those hooks. "They do have to make quite an in-out, in-out and out to get it. But this will ensure that the garbage collection vehicles can safely and effectively access the cul-de-sac without obstruction, and then also no parking during snowstorms and snow removal operations. This will allow plows to clear the streets, effectively improving the streets' safety for all residents. This adjustment would maintain the necessary access for service vehicles while also accommodating residents and visitors. Vehicles during regular conditions. Many households in our neighborhood have limited driveway space, and the current regulation creates unnecessary parking hardships, particularly for large families, elderly residents, and those with mobility challenges. In the case that neither compromise is acceptable due to easement restrictions and regulations, I know that it's 36 feet required, and we're at 33 feet right now. My suggestion is involving the removal of the current center curb. So what it is right now is a light pole in the center of grass and then the curb. So right now, it's at 32 feet. So even if we pulled up the cement and closed it in to a two-feet around, that would give us 36 and 1/4. And I know I was told by the officer it cost around $1,200 to install those signs. So to either, again, if those two options aren't acceptable to make it just trash pickup days and snow removal days, I feel that contracting somebody, even myself, for $800 to simply tear that all up and create two feet instead, everybody I spoke to in the neighborhood already doesn't even like the fact that it's just grass there. I don't, it's just an eyesore to people. But besides that, I just feel this would be better for everybody. I worked for UPS for 18 years, and I understand going through cul-de-sacs can sometimes be difficult, but I can without a doubt say this cul-de-sac is not one of those. So I would definitely say no trash or no pick, no parking on trash days and snow operation days would be more than a reasonable compromise.
Yeah, I don't want to speak for the board, but I personally don't remember this. I don't remember this coming up. I, so that being said, I think that it's something that we could, we could find out what the origin of this is. I don't know what the purpose of those signs necessarily was. If it's fire engines and stuff getting back there, maybe that's what it was. If it was the trash, I'm not sure. But I think that we could certainly, you know, find out what that is and take a look at it. I think that my personal opinion is that would be reasonable. If it's a trash thing, I think that would be reasonable to say trash, snow removal. I think that's totally reasonable, my opinion. But, you know, so if we could get that information and then find out, you know, what the origin of that was from the safety director or whoever made that decision, then we can kind of move forward from there. But we'd like to have, you know, everything that you laid out there so that we can take a look at that. But it could, it's probably, it could be a very simple solution. I'm not sure. But again, can't make any promises. If it has to do with fire, that they're concerned with fire EMS getting back there, that's a whole nother story. But, yeah, so, thank you.
What streets are involved?
What's that? It's Benjamin Court and Vanessa Drive.
Did everyone in the cul-de-sac sign your petition?
Everybody but one. I wasn't able to speak to the one household. And in the cul-de-sacs, yes. And then along the streets, I wasn't able to speak. Some don't speak English at all, so that was, that made it awfully difficult, obviously. But, yeah, even, I explained it to them. It simply is, if you're taking away seven spots in one cul-de-sac, nine spots in the other cul-de-sac, they, it's all one street that connect all of that. It's not just going to affect the people in the cul-de-sac. It's going to be, if somebody in the cul-de-sac was having a get-together, holidays, and somebody right down the street was having one, they're going to be parked down, all the way down to the mailboxes, which is down another street and a half then. And it's just going to make it incredibly, just difficult for everybody. Should I leave this with everybody? Anybody here?
Sure. Yeah, you can bring it up. If, do you have, I mean, do you have a copy for yourself? Okay. Yeah. Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, moving on. Anybody else for public comment? Any other public comment? Seeing none, moving on to chairman and board member comments. Any chairman or, I don't have any comments tonight. Board member comments?
I'm going to hold my comments.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one comment. We had a resident come to us a couple of meetings ago and complain about the noise and the air quality as he lives near the compost facility. I contacted the individual. I went and met with him. I also went and met, didn't meet with him, but visited a second time on Friday, this past Friday, when he said the noise was going to be louder because the grinder was working. I just wanted to compliment Officer Shiflett, who was out there doing his duty, taking readings of the sound levels, and I found him to be most professional. I spoke to the resident. He was very pleased with the officer. He was pleased that we were paying attention to his complaint. And while there's still more investigation to be done, just as a point of reference, 65 decibels is the loudness of a normal, everyday conversation between two people. The sound that I heard while the grinder was going was at 70 decibels, so it certainly was louder than two people having a conversation, but it wasn't extraordinarily so. So I agreed with the resident to go back again when the sound is louder. But the purpose for my comment is Officer Shiflett was an outstanding representative of Lower Paxton Township, and I just wanted to give him that kudo.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. The board did meet in executive session to discuss personnel issues and township business, and we will not be meeting after this meeting. Nobody else? Okay. Moving on. Was that for public comment? Lyle. Hey, sir. Lyle, okay. Well, Lyle, we'll take you. Thank you so much. Lyle is our HR gentleman. Thank you so much for
I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak before the board and distinguished guests today. My name is Lyle Gaines. I'm elder Dr. Lyle V. Gaines. I am the HR manager for the Lower Paxton Township. Couple of my employees came to me, and they seemed to be kind of disturbed about the most recent events that may have occurred in the board. And to be honest with you, it's been a little bit of a disruption. You know, I've heard their comments, and what I decided to do was take a look at the videos myself. I went back quite some time, at least a year, just to get a feel of or try to determine whether the information that was communicated to me was either even worth looking into. I'll be honest with you, I was a little disturbed. So what I did was, I wrote to my boss, Bradley Gottschall, and based on my communication, I'm going to read to you all what I wrote to him, so that you all understand how I feel about him, as well as the climate in the workplace due to these events. And I'll be honest, they were disturbing to me. So here it goes. I copied the board on my communication to Mr. Gottschall. I don't hide in corners. You know, I'm a person that believes in integrity. And basically, my message today is for unity. So I said to Brad, "With all you go through for all the employees at the township, I believe this moment and time you deserve some support. I wanted you to know how much I appreciate your leadership, and I thought it was important to let the rest of the leadership know and understand the person I interact with each day and have come to know. I know if I asked your permission to write this letter, you would have tried to stop me." This one's on me, Brad. "To the board, as the manager of HR, it is my responsibility to make sure that we have a climate where all individuals are accepted and appreciated. And Brad is one of those individuals, and so is Sam. These gentlemen have been upstanding toward me and the employees, and I appreciate their leadership. The most recent events to the Board of Supervisors' meetings have caused great stress on our staff, and for the most part, it's a great distraction to the work we are called to perform for our residents. These events have resonated, and I'm calling for unity and decency toward each other. This discord must stop. Whether it's politically or racially motivated, it still must stop. Our employees deserve better, and our residents deserve even more. I will continue to pray for unity as an ordained and licensed minister." My letter to Brad on March 6, 2025. "It is clear that you've been through a great deal lately, both personally and professionally, and I can only imagine the toll it has taken on you. As the HR manager, I must admit, it's been a distraction to the team for the most part. I want to express my full support as we move forward. It's evident that you've dedicated a significant portion of your life to public service, and your commitment to the community and the township has not been unnoticed. For everyone around the age of my child, my youngest child, 33, you spent half your life serving the public. You deserve better. While I understand the complexities of leadership and the scrutiny that come with it, especially when people are quick to judge based on hearsay or limited perspectives, I know that these past few months have been challenging. But please know that I, along with many others, recognize your hard work and the positive impact you've made. It's easy to get lost in the noise, but the work we do together is what ultimately matters. Working closely with you has been a great pleasure and honor. I mean that from the bottom of my heart. I work approximately 30 feet from Mr. Gottschall's office daily. If anybody knows him or sees him up close, it's me. And I have no problem telling him when he's doing something wrong." Give me a minute. "And I've never witnessed you yelling, being a bigot, a racist, vindictive, authoritarian, personally enriching, acting all-powerful, or paranoid dictator. I have never seen that. I don't expect to see it. For the first time in my life, as a 65-year-old African-American, licensed and ordained minister, I've never felt more respected and accepted for my accomplishments than by you. Aside from my closest friends, you are the first boss who has ever called me your brother. When you hired me, there were approximately 50 applicants, most of whom were much younger and likely fit into the good old boys model you are being accused of. This makes me angry, and I'm sorry because I get emotional. When I asked you, 'Why did you select a 62-year-old black man over 50 applicants?' You simply responded, 'You were the best qualified.'" "Well, I say to you, Mr. Gottschall, you better be careful. They may pull away your good old boy card. I always ask this question because you always allow me to speak candidly, and you've proven that I can be comfortable sharing whatever is on my mind, including race. Under your leadership, I've been, I've seen someone who embodies integrity, fairness, and compassion, always striving to bring out the best in others. It's rare to encounter such leadership and kindness, and I've learned so much from your example. Thank you for the inspiration and for creating an environment where collaboration and mutual respect thrive. I truly appreciate everything you've done, and I look forward to working together to move beyond these vicious deceptive rumors. Let's keep pushing forward, and please know that I'm here to support you and the team as we continue to move forward toward these goals." I know I've asked you if I could copy the Board of Supervisors. You'd probably tell me that's not my fight. Always trying to protect your team. Always trying to protect your team. Well, I decided to copy the board myself, on the message anyway. One thing I've learned, that sometimes it's easier to ask for forgiveness than permission, especially when it's something I truly, truly believe in. Now, I'm not going to share with you the scriptures that I've gave of Mr. Gottschall, because I understand in an acumenical sense, not everybody believes what I believe. And out of respect for those who don't, I want to use this letter as my character witness in any job action against you, Mr. Gottschall. And I will take the stand and affirm to anyone about your character. I've seen it firsthand. It's not hearsay. It's something I've witnessed for almost three years now. And I will continue to stand by your side because you've always stood by mine, no matter what the color of my skin looks like. And I just want to share a real quick story. I walked in here, and I introduced myself to one of the doctors in this room. And when I told him I was the HR manager, I said, you didn't see that coming, did you? He just smiled at me. Couldn't believe it, probably. But I'm here to tell you, I enjoy working for this man. And if he leaves, guess what? I'll probably be right behind him. That's the kind of leadership him and Sam have shown me. I've been investigated by this board. Accused just like everybody else of stealing time. And you know what? I had a five-page questionnaire for those who investigated me. And there was no there there. It was embarrassing. And one of the questions they asked me, do you telework? Seriously? I'm an exempt employee. I said, absolutely. Every single day. Every day. They looked at me like I was crazy. I said, yeah, I telework every day. Soon as I get up in the morning, I'm teleworking. I'm on my computer. I'm on my phone. Soon as I get to work, I'm teleworking. I'm on my computer. I'm on my phone. Soon as I get home, I'm teleworking. I'm on my computer, and I'm on my phone. On the weekends, I'm on my computer, and I'm on my phone. I'm the only one who does HR. Who else is going to do it? Yeah, I'm teleworking. And then some days, when I just ain't up to it, yeah, I stay home and I telework. I got the same equipment at home as I do at my job. I'm not robbing anybody. Actually, I'm giving you more time than you pay me for. If we're going to keep it real. And to Ms. Kurtz, I apologize, because I went back a few years just to see how people were sworn in. And this is the first time since I've been in this township that she had to endure the chaos and how she was treated. You have my apology if anyone has not apologized to you yet. And I'm not going to name any names. And Mr. Lowman and I didn't always agree on politics, but I can tell you one thing. He engaged in peaceful transfer of power. He was kicked out because he lost an election, and he went gracefully. Now, the rest of the story, I'm sure you can all figure it out. But this time was different. I yield to the chair. Thank you all.
Thank you, Reverend, for having the courage to get up and say what you did. You know, we we appreciate that. I think I do speak for the board that we are in agreement that we're trying to work through through everything. And and we also agree that the the staff and the township deserve better. So we appreciate your thoughts and your prayers. Thank you for your time. Is there anyone? I know that we're kind of out of line here. Anybody else have anything else to say? No? Okay. Let's. Yes, sir. Yes, I I will allow one more. Sure. Okay, that's fine.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. I am the doc. My name is Dr. Charles Stewart, fourteen forty Karen, Carolina, because I'm supposed to tell you that. I am the doctor that the gentleman here referred to when he walked in. He greeted him, and I smiled. And he said, I bet you didn't expect that. Well, I smiled because I'm showing you respect. Okay? I'm not I'm not smiling because I agree. So I just want to make that point clear. Everybody has a choice of making their own opinions on this matter, and his was made perfectly clear. But there's always two or three sides still coined. And I think everybody needs to understand that. I'm not saying his side is wrong. It's his opinion, and he has a right to make that opinion. And I just want to make it clear that there's two, three sides to every story.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate you, doctor. Thank you. Okay. Moving on. Presentation of an update on the Commonwealth legislation pertaining to shopping malls and other municipalities and municipal affairs. And we have Representative Justin Fleming. Thank you so much, sir, for coming in and joining us.
Good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
We look forward to your update. Thank you so much. It's going to be so. So yes, I'm going to get to malls in just a second, but it's going to be a little more extensive than that. Hey, Laura. How are you? It's going to be a little more extensive than that. We just concluded. I have the great honor and privilege to serve on the Appropriations Committee. And we just concluded budget hearings. We had twenty-three hearings with different state departments in twelve days, which, as you can imagine, is quite rigorous, and heard many hours of testimony about the state budget. So I just want to give, and I want to be as quickly as as I want to do this as quickly as I can. But I just want to start by giving an overview of the budget. This year's general fund budget proposal is fifty-one point four seven billion dollars by the Shapiro administration. It projects a one point six billion dollar deficit that is balanced by funds that we have in the Budget Stabilization or Rainy Day Fund. The drivers, the new spending initiatives total one point three three billion dollars. And the main drivers of the cost increase are human services, particularly in Medicaid. That's about fifty-five percent of it. Increases in education, twenty-five percent. Treasury and debt services, nine percent. Corrections and state police come in at about four percent. So increased increased increases in public safety and and human services and education. There are new revenue sources that are proposed. Adult-use cannabis is proposed to generate five hundred thirty-six and a half million dollars if it were passed by the General Assembly. Gaming expansion, so skill games. And I believe the I believe the tax rate, the governor's proposed tax rate, is fifty-four percent on those skill games. That's what he's assuming. So that'll bring in three hundred sixty-eight point nine million. Corporate net income tax reform, which is actually a quicker process in lowering the corporate net income tax from nine point nine nine percent down to four point nine nine percent. That's expected to generate two hundred sixty-four million dollars in revenue and a an increase in the minimum wage. So paying workers fifteen dollars an hour across the board is expected to generate fifty-one and a half million dollars in tax revenue. So, you know, I have been, ever since I was elected in twenty twenty-two, I have been a supporter of all three of the municipalities that I represent. You know, we have, I have been, you know, especially here in Lower Paxton Township, I think I've been an ally in terms of, you know, support for grants and and funding that the township has sought. One of the one of the messages I want to leave with you is that they told us, and you Brad heard this earlier, Brad and Sam heard this earlier, as well as Alan, at Patty Kim's briefing, but Senator Patty Kim's briefing. Penn Vest says it has unspent funds. So for those communities like Lower Paxton that have robust stormwater programs, let's get that Penn Vest money, and let's get it here in Dauphin County. And I think that's one of the hallmarks here in Dauphin County. We have always worked well together, regardless of party. And that's something that I'm extraordinarily proud of. I had the great pleasure, before I was elected, to serve as state representative, to serve as a township commissioner for eight years over in Susquehanna Township, the next-door neighbor. And, yeah, I was chair of the Public Safety Committee. I was I was on the Budget Committee and Pension Committee, so really sort of big responsibilities. And the nice part about that was, it didn't matter what my party registration was at all when I served. The disagreements, the five-four votes or whatever, were never along party lines. You know, unfortunately, we are here in Lower Paxton Township experiencing turmoil, and it's it's disappointing to see. The bottom line is, people want a local government that works, not a local government that fights. And when it doesn't work, unfortunately, there are real world implications for that turmoil. And so part of what brings me here tonight is, I saw once again that the Colonial Park Mall is up for sale. And so, you know, last year during the budget, I was able to get a valuable piece of piece of language into our fiscal code that established a ten million dollar program to renovate shopping malls across the Commonwealth. My intent is for the Colonial Park Mall to get some of that funding. Now, we're still in the early stages of that program. It is right now in the public comment phase, and it's going to be through the Commonwealth Finance Agency. And so, but that was a really big win. That was a really big win for Lower Paxton. And my hope is that that can be the start of something bigger. It's ten million dollars this year. Hopefully, next year, we can get twenty-five million. Hopefully, the year after that, fifty million, because the need is great statewide. And what happens when, and and just a few months ago, I was I was in this very hall discussing this with with then Chair Robin Lindsay about the implications of of that. You know, if we let these shopping malls go, it's a blight on the community, it's a public safety hazard, and it's a public health hazard, especially with the way Lower Paxton Township is set up, where that's almost like the centerpiece of the entire township is the Colonial Park Mall, and it takes up so much real estate. So for this community and for the residents and for my district as a whole, we can't afford to have it die on the vine. So I was I was disheartened to see that once again, it's up for sale. And I'm going to I'm going to quote from the the story that was in Penn Live. So Thomas Ryan, the attorney representing forty-six hundred Jones Town Road LLC, said that Mr. Zhang, the former owner, ultimately decided to put the mall up for sale because Zhang's vision and the township's differed. He also contended that communication with Lower Paxton Township officials has been frustrating. Ryan did give Lower Paxton credit for creating the new zoning district that could help someone succeed at that location, but he also said that communication with township officials hasn't been great, and that they were getting different responses about how to proceed. Okay? And I understand that that Mr. Scherzer was quoted, that there was some issue by the township taken with that characterization, and I completely get that. And I want to respect that piece of it as well. My point is, it gives me no joy to stand here today and reinforce the difficulties that are happening in this township. But I cannot help, as a citizen, to connect the dots between the turmoil taking place and one of the biggest pieces of real estate once again being up for sale because of the actions that are taking place. There may or may not be a link. Maybe it was going to come up for sale if if none of this was happening. But it sure as hell doesn't help at all. When you have three people who resign in succession that have more than two decades of municipal experience combined, it has to give us pause, and we have to figure out what in the world is going on. Like I said, I served as a as an elected official in Susquehanna, so I know the responsibility each of you face sitting in those chairs, though I'm not an attorney, Morgan, so I don't know what you're going through. But, you know, again, like I said, my office has a track record of helping Lower Paxton Township. I will continue to do that. Even through these difficulties, I will continue to do that. But we can all help ourselves. You can help yourself by appointing the best people to serve, people who have the interests of the township in mind, and not, you know, not dealing with, you know, partisan politics this way or that way, hyper-partisanship. Because at this level, and that's one of the best things I loved about serving in local government, at this level, it did not matter at all. The fact that I'm a registered Democrat had no bearing. I voted on what I thought was the best interest of the township, and I don't want to cast dispersions. I'm not saying that you all aren't. So don't don't get me wrong. But I'm saying, this needs to be corrected and and hopefully corrected soon, because, like I say, it may be a sheer coincidence that the timing of the mall came up for sale while this was going on, but it certainly got my attention. And so if we are going to, what we need to do is, you know, end the turmoil and start putting the residents of Lower Paxton Township first. You have my commitment to do that, and I will continue to walk this road with you and be as helpful as I can in any way possible. So, you know, we're going to continue to fight for grant money. We're going to continue to fight for really good PennDOT projects and things that'll that'll help public safety. But, you know, I'm hoping this is an unfortunate blip, and and that we can all move together and coalesce and move forward in a united manner and and put an end to this difficulty and this turmoil. So thank you very much for listening to me this evening.
Representative Fleming, thank you so much for for taking the time with us today. And thank you for your comments. We greatly appreciate our relationship with you and your office, and I think it is it's a wonderful partnership that we've had. I don't really have too many comments on the mall. I do believe that that was, you know, I'm not going to comment on that. I don't know if the solicitor would like to have any comment on that, but, you know, I think it is what it is. But I will say that if you, you know, if you have this money available, I would think that maybe this is a good situation where we have somebody who's willing to come in here, knowing that there may be some assistance there and wanting to do something that is, you know, that is actually of substance.
Yeah. And thank you, Paul. I just want to, you're exactly right, Supervisor. I mean, and and I'll be clear, you know, it's, you know, someone may ask the question, well, why are we using tax dollars to, isn't this a private, a matter of private industry or the free market? Yes, it is. But sometimes we need to incentivize things like this as well, and that's that's the intent of the program.
I mean, I couldn't agree with you more, because we see what happens when these things fail. Like you already said that. But but when they fail, you know, they they just become a shell for crime, you know, or whatever. So, yeah, we definitely don't want that. It should be, you know, maybe not, it should be the crown jewel maybe of our of our township. So, you know, and I think that it has the potential to do that. We need to find the correct person. That's difficult. That's not really within our purview to to find that. You know that. But but maybe this, you know, if we know, and you put this out there, that this is down the road, I think this is perfect, because maybe we find somebody who is the right buyer, who wants to do the right things.
Yeah.
And that's, so thank you so much. I commend you on that. That is just absolutely wonderful. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you, Supervisor. Appreciate you.
Supervisor Navarro, if I may, just just not to belabor this point, but on the mall, it's been brought up now, and I think it'd be good to at least put on the record to some degree to reiterate the township's response to Penn Live.
Oh, yeah.
That was an unfortunate quote. No, I it was an unfortunate quote with regard to the lack of communication, or I forget however the current owner phrased it. But shortly after the purchase of the mall by the current owner now, I met in that room myself, our Economic Development Director, and and Mr. Scherzer as well, actually, with the new owners. He himself was here, as well as his son, a an engineering representative, if I can remember correctly, and and I think potentially a legal representative as well. And we hashed out very early and very clearly. We spent a lot of good time discussing what the township's vision of the site had been, which had been crafted and ordained through the zoning ordinance, through the town center zoning district. And unfortunately, they had mentioned to me that they purchased the mall without having done much research into the zoning district and what the requirements were, particularly as it relates to the master plan requirement. There's a master plan requirement in the zoning district which requires, due to the complexity of the site, based on the fact complexity of the site, uh, based on the fact that it has multiple owners, Boscoffs, the mall, Sears, the township wanted to ensure that the site in its entirety is developed consistent with the vision of the board. And so this master plan requirement would require a developer to submit a conceptual plan before any of the other, uh, prescribed SALDO requirements, before an actual submission is, is done, just so that the township can get a sense of what the developer is looking at with regard to the entire site. Because we know it's going to take a phased approach, it's a big site, uh, we're requiring residential, commercial, it's a very complex development. So master plan is a way to allow us to, to, to make sure that's being followed. So, when the new owner came to us and, uh, was concerned about that requirement, and not having, uh, either the developmental or the financial wherewithal to make it happen, uh, the township, uh, worked with that owner to put in place a separate development agreement to allow them to begin the process of developing the, the front, the former Bonton shell into the Family Fund Center, which they're looking to do, uh, and to do that ahead of a formal master plan being submitted. So the township worked with them immediately, uh, to, to actually provide relief to something the ordinance would have otherwise required. So that unfortunate quote, uh, was just that unfortunate, uh, misdirected, mischaracterization, uh, and, uh, I was, I was happy that at least Penn Live reached out to us to get some clarification. But, uh, this bill, I think, would, would vastly assist us, Representative, and we, certainly the township appreciates. We noted several times that you use Colonial Park as, as the example, so we were very happy to, to see, to see that in press releases all throughout the Commonwealth, so, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Brad. I, I mean, I, I remember this, I remember the whole thing, because I remember, I, I was a little shocked that they didn't do it, take advantage of their due diligence, period, but, yeah, so unfortunate, but hopefully better things coming down the road, so thanks to you and your team.
Mr. Chairman, a comment?
Yes, sir.
Representative Fleming, I too am only interested in serving the township residents and whatever that means. I will tell you that in the interviews I've held for replacement supervisors, one of the questions I asked them was about economic development. If you have some ideas about how we can mutually assist in making certain that the Colonial Park Mall becomes that centerpiece, I'm more than happy to listen to any ideas and to help you or, or to move the board in the direction. So please, you know, any time that you have that you'd like to communicate with me about that, I'd love to have that conversation. Know that I consider the Colonial Park Mall one of the top five issues township is facing today. Thank you, because your support is gonna be absolutely necessary, and I concur and agree.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nobody else? Okay. Seeing no other comments, um, we'll move on to the next action, um, which I'm not very happy about, but it is what it is. The Board will take action to rescind the appointment of Laura Kurtz to the Board of Supervisors. Solicitor Madden?
Thank you, Supervisor. Um, at the outset, I want to say I appeared last week via phone, um, due to a personal family issue, and I appreciate the Board's grace in allowing me to do that. Um, I wasn't able to hear a lot of the beginning of the meeting due to some audio issues here, but I was ultimately put on speakerphone, um, and, and could hear relatively well what was happening. Uh, I was asked the question during the vote to approve Ms. Kurtz's appointment, whether the Board needed to unanimously, excuse me, unanimously, in other words, all three of the sitting members vote in unison to appoint. I answered that, um, a majority was needed. It became clear to me the following day that there was some discourse about that guidance I provided. Um, I reevaluated the case law, uh, the statutory law, and talked to colleagues from throughout the state, and, and stand firm in my, in my initial position that only a majority was needed, given the circumstances of the Board that night. That said, uh, my responsibility is to represent the best interests of the Board, and by doing that, the best interests of the township as a whole and its residents. Um, and given the discourse and the potential looming litigation regarding my opinion, I, I certainly don't want to, uh, I, I, my ego is not so large as to, to suggest that the, the Board spend taxpayer dollars to litigate this issue. And so, uh, my guidance to the Board has been, since, since mid-last week, uh, to put an action on tonight's agenda to rescind the, the vote to appoint Ms. Kurtz, um, and carry on with the process for filling Board vacancies as set forth in the Second Class Township Code.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. All right. Do we have a motion for, uh, to, the motion to rescind, um, the appointment of Ms. Kurtz to the Board of Supervisors? Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Um, I guess we'll, we'll, I guess we have to have a, uh, all, all have to vote for, for that? Okay, then, uh, all in favor say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Um, we will rescind Mrs. Kurtz's, uh, appointment. I do apologize for that. Um, you know, and, and we'll move that to the vacancy Board.
I would like to make a comment now. I said earlier that I would like to reserve my comments.
Okay, ma'am, ma'am, that's fine, as long as it's not, you know, disparaging in any way.
We are legislatively a five-member Board with two vacancies. When we are sitting as three, we must vote unanimously, just like we did. Why are we rescinding the appointment of Mrs. Kurtz? Because the guidance provided by the Solicitor was inaccurate. Because collectively, we are big enough to acknowledge we were wrong. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of comments to make. Um, lighten the mood a little bit. There's an old joke, "What do you call 10,000 lawyers at the bottom of the ocean?" Da-da-da, the answer is, "A good start."
No. I object to that.
Yeah, I know. It was only a bad joke.
Okay. None of those, no more of those.
No, no. Um, listen, I learned a long time ago, my dad taught me, the only people that don't make mistakes are those people that don't do anything. So we were trying to do what we thought was the right thing to do, um, and by the way, I concur with Solicitor Madden that I've asked a number of attorneys, um, as Ms. Thompson asked the folks over at PSTATs, I also asked them, um, there is a great deal of conflicting opinions on whether or not our vote, uh, the other night was correct or not. But, as also our Solicitor told us, in an abundance of caution, not willing to risk significant sums of money in litigating this, and also, by the way, if we were incorrect, and that's a possibility, I don't discount, um, if we were wrong in seating, uh, Laura Kurtz last week, anything that we would have done in the time she was sitting might have had to been, gone back over and changed. So this is not an admission that the information or the recommendation by Solicitor Madden was incorrect, it is an admission that because of an abundance of caution and a concern to not get the township in trouble in any way, shape, or form, we are taking this action and allowing the, at the normal practice, and you agree, Supervisor Thompson, that the normal practice is to go to the vacancy Board if we don't have a three-person agreement. Is that right? You agree with that?
I'm going by the memo that, the email that we received on March 10th from Solicitor Madden. I provided you and Supervisor Navarro with a copy of that particular email.
So you do, you are in concurrence that the next step, if we cannot get three votes on one's particular applicant, that the appropriate way to handle this is to move it to the vacancy Board, right? If we don't do it within 30 days, have three votes for any of the candidates we've received applications from, that the appropriate next step is to allow the vacancy Board to, uh, convene and for us to have a decision at that level. Is that correct?
I believe that she's, she's acknowledged. You've acknowledged that.
The email that I sent to you all this weekend, I believe, asked that we meet on Wednesday to try to hammer this out, and if we didn't hammer it out on Wednesday, to meet on Thursday, and I didn't get a response back from you all, um, do you want me to read the information in the memo from...
Well, it's not necessary, Supervisor Thompson. It's, it's not necessary. You made your vote, and Supervisor Navarro and myself, we made our votes, and according to our...
So will we be meeting tomorrow?
No, according to our conversation, you're not willing to change your vote, and we're not willing to change ours, so to go to the vacancy...
Let's just, let's just relax. There's, there's absolutely, you know, no reason to have this discussion.
Okay.
I think that we've, hold on, we've, we've, we've kind of beaten this thing to death. Um, this is no reflection on Ms. Kurtz. I mean, you know, you know, her, her resume speaks for herself, and we, we will discuss that at a later date, um, but, but this is where we stand right now. This is the right move for the township, it's the right move for, for the people of township, so that we can, you know, make sure that we follow the appropriate steps, um, that we don't have to drag this out so that we can actually get work done. That's the point.
Yes.
The point is that we get work done here so that these people don't have to suffer, um, and that's what we're going to do. And, and, and so, so we're gonna move on, and we're going to, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna take that, we're gonna take that appropriate step and avoid anything else.
Mr. Chairman, I was just gonna say that I appreciate Supervisor Thompson bringing the matter up so that we could resolve it now.
Well...
So I want to say thanks to her for bringing it up at the current time so that we can resolve this matter and move forward. As you said, there's a ton of work to do by the Board of Supervisors.
Yeah, we have, we have, we have things that we need to get done, and a lot of policies that be, need to be made, and you have a lot of policies that need to be changed. Um, it would be helpful to have somebody who, who has that niche market kind of cornered, so that's where we're at. And, um, you know, so, so I appreciate your comments, uh, from, from all Board members, um, you know, and, and we'll get this nailed out, we'll get this hammered out and, and figured out. Anything else? Uh, any other comments?
I just want to make sure I understand, are we going to be able to meet tomorrow to have more discussion about this appointment? I'm, I'm definitely willing.
Ma'am, I, I understand. I, I appreciate that you're willing. Uh, I am, first off, not available, because I'll be working, um, and, and also, I do not wish to change, I don't, I don't wish to change my vote, and I, and, and we can discuss her, you know, uh, at some point, but, um, you know, I, I find it to be pointless to, to have that conversation. So we'll follow the path that we have to do that has been set forth, um, by, um, you know, code for the, the second class, or township of the second class, and we will move forward in that fashion. Um, and we will save, uh, taxpayer money on something that is just, um, not worth spending money on. We have other things that we need to spend money on, so...
It doesn't, I'm, I'm sorry, Supervisor Navarro, but it, it won't cost any taxpayer money if we just sit and talk in the executive session on Wednesday or Thursday. Once again, I'm willing to do that.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, I understand, but I, I don't see any point in that. I'm, I'm not personally willing to change. So, um, you know, is there anything else from anybody else? Okay. Uh, any announcements from any of the Board members? No announcements? All right, hearing none. I'll call for adjournment. All in favor, or...
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? So moved. I apologize. The next Board meeting is going to be on March 18th, on Tuesday at 7:00 PM. Hi. Oh, how are you? You know, I am not sure, yes, I'm not sure. Give me your, give me your email. Oh, you asked me if I was gonna be here. I, I did not respond to you, and I apologize for that, but I think that right now I need to stay. I think right now, right, if I would leave, it's a good decision. What happens is, no decisions are being made, that these two would have to pay up that, and, and to the courts, and judge on that decision, and, and, and houses could get built. I speak to you every single matter.